Because I really enjoy these meetings. It's great to see everybody in the audience and all that. But I have submitted for the record for the meeting this letter from our former planning director with regard to the notice provisions, which I'm not going to get into in detail, but it is part of the public record. And as to whether or not, given the nature of the notice for this meeting, the fact that this is what I consider kind of a rush to judgment, I'm not even sure if we're not wasting our time procedurally doing that. That being said, I'm also going to recuse myself from any discussions about the map for Point Roberts, again, for reasons that pertain to the appearance of fairness statute. I'm not going to disclose whether it's going to be for or against me, but I do reserve the right to comment on one small portion of the Point Roberts map. But I'm not going to vote on the Point Roberts map. And I suggest that other commissioners that have businesses or residences in these areas that are covered by the maps, you know, consider that as well. I would like to vote, as our chair has indicated, given the limited time, on each page and on each map. It shouldn't take too long, because I'm sure we've all read this, too. And some of these maps are pretty straightforward in terms of the changes. Some of them are fairly radical. But I'd like to set this up so that we move right along. I got two o'clock now, so we're here for another three hours. No public testimony.
Do you have a motion?
I move that we vote on each map and each page of text that we're considering in our packet.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
All in favor of voting page by page?
Aye.
We have just a question.
Oh, sorry.
Are you talking about going through the text separately from the maps?
Yes.
And just doing the text?
We'll start the text first, then go into the maps at the end, I guess. That's the order in our packet.
Yeah, a couple of things that I just want to make sure we understand as we go through this, in part because I don't. I want to know what criteria were the basic criterias that were used for this council to make the change. So as we go through this, I heard your explanation, but really what was important for me was to hear some of the reasons, like the underground line, underground pipe, and those kind of things. So the background is key for me to make, to understand what was going on in their heads as they went through this. So I want to make sure that's a part of this discussion.
You up for that?
Thank you.
I also need that information. It took the council, how many meetings to come up with this? I don't know. It looked like there was 100 up there, but there wasn't. Took the planning commission quite a few. And for us to attempt this in the three hours we have, after they worked so hard to do this, is almost an insult. But I guess we're going to try.
Commissioner Lesal.
We, procedurally, we can ask questions of the audience, and we have three county council members in the audience right now. Council members Brenner, Crawford, and Knutson. And if that question could be directed to them, by all means, I think we're procedurally within our bounds to ask them that question.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor of going through the packet, page by page, and voting on each page?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? One of 29. Any comments?
Yes.
Commissioner Lesal.
The verbiage has changed in this. I suggest we change, we've got needed and needs in here. I don't like that word. I don't think it really applies in a planning context. Distinct boundary is needed between rural and urban areas. I think we should substitute required for that. And on goal 2A, ensure provision of sufficient land and densities to accommodate the growth needs of Waukam County, et cetera. I think we need to, that's vague. I think we should insert chosen population forecast, which is something that the council deals with. That is, the numbers from the OFM. Council is here. They can decide whether they want low, medium, or high. But this has been going on for years and years, and I think that it needs to be codified. Needs is not a very strong word. Policy 2A2, draw distinct boundaries between urban and rural uses. That's fine. Provide a range of land uses which considers locational and market factors, as well as required quantities of land. I'm not really sure what that means. Designate land uses that reflect the best use of the land. I would propose striking both 2A3 and 2A4. Other than that, it looks fine.
Will you make your motion?
I move that we strike 2A3, 2A, 2A3, 2A4. And actually, 2A5, provide predictability to property owners and land use designation. I would substitute provide predictability to maintain consistent. I don't know. Forget it. Forget about the predictability thing. I move we strike 2A3, 2A4. We change policy 2A2 to draw distinct boundaries. And goal 2A is to ensure provision of sufficient land and densities to accommodate the chosen population forecast, et cetera. And in the introduction, a distinct boundary is required, required between rural and urban areas, discouraging sprawl, et cetera. That's my motion.
I'm sorry, are those, are those changes?
Those aren't changes.
No.
Those are changes that the council made, and we're only considering changes that the council made, I believe, procedurally.
So what are we supposed to do, Royce?
Well, you're only considering the changes that the council made. Maybe I turn it over to Gary, because he's well-versed in what the council changed, so...
It's underlined.
The underlined, okay. What page are you?
None of us have received a red-lined version. Mine are in pencil, so the needed is, in fact, a red-lined provision. It's all black and white.
Well, it's not red, but it's underlined.
It is underlined.
Underlined means that that was the change. So the word needed, for example, that's something that was changed from the original draft, but the other areas were not changed. Those are going forward from the original planning commission recommendation.
Did we originally say growth needs of Waukam County? Was that in the original document, Gary?
In which section?
Goal 2A. Was that our original verbiage? Maybe it was.
It must have been. What this document is, is the April 12, 2011 draft that was introduced, with the underlined changes and the deletions showing the difference between that and the planning commission recommendation. So if it's shown without any kind of deletion or underline there, it was the planning commission recommendation.
Wow. No wonder this has taken so long. Okay, I withdraw. Every motion except the one to change needs or needed to required.
Okay, the motion is to change the word needed to required under the accommodating growth paragraph. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Aye.
All opposed?
Can I ask the chair?
Yes.
Point of order. Can we discuss a couple of things?
Yes.
You're moving quickly to the motion and vote. I know you, but at least if you look for, just a big-picture question. And I think, Royce, I left this message for you. As we make changes through this, I want to know where we are statutorily. And we've got certain timelines, which is why we're trying to cram this all into one day. And I want that big picture to be in front of me as I go through this, to see. If we're going to do this in this timeframe and we make changes, what's the timeframe going forward? And how close are you guys going to be to the wire? And then what are the penalties if you guys miss the deadline?
We were given until May 24, I believe, to comply, to create a new, to adopt a new ordinance by the hearings board. So we, the way it's scheduled right now, as I showed on the board, is we have a public hearing scheduled for the county council tomorrow night, at which point they can either adopt the ordinance that was introduced two weeks ago on the 12th, or they can introduce a new ordinance with changes either that night or at the following meeting. So if they introduced a new ordinance that night, then it would be considered by the council two weeks later, on, I believe, May 10th. Now, if it wasn't reintroduced that night and had to be reintroduced May 10th, then two weeks after that, it has to be, it has to be introduced two weeks before it's adopted. So if it's introduced on the 10th, then that puts you right on the 24th for adoption of the final ordinance.
So what really is happening here is we're in a big hurry because of a whole lot of meetings that didn't accomplish the job they were supposed to accomplish under laws. That kind of, I mean, we, the original planning commission sent a document that took into a lot of consideration as far as legality of what we were doing and fairness. And it got changed and got kicked back to us. And now, because it got kicked back, we're kind of in a hard spot here.
Well, like I said, we have the opportunity to still make changes and still make the deadline. We, if changes are made, if recommendations are made by the planning commission today, the county council can act on them tomorrow, introduce them tomorrow, and still act in time to meet the deadline.
One of the, it was difficult, but one of the things that really helped us in the original planning commission meeting was the public input. And that public input made us aware of problems or ideas that the staff wasn't aware of, and it really rounded us out and helped to make changes. We made a lot of, a number of changes that we would have never considered without that public input. And it just kind of seems strange that that public input is coming at the time it's coming. It's kind of backwards a little bit, maybe. So I just have, I don't know what's going on here, but it's interesting.
Well, we do have the public meeting tonight, and we wanted to do a work session to get everyone familiar with the issues and get everybody on the same page again.
That's only understandable, I guess.
Wait a minute. No, but I don't understand that. So I want to vote before five o'clock on these pages and maps. And if we vote, and then we have a public meeting, we've already voted, or are we going to vote at the end of the meeting tonight? Procedurally, what are we going to do?
We're going to, after the public hearing, if we hear anything new, anything compelling to make changes on, we can recommend those changes as well.
But we're going to vote at the end of this work session. We're voting right now.
Well, we're going to vote at the end of the public hearing on our recommendations to the council.
That may be past my bedtime.
So what we're doing now in the work session is just going through and finding agreement or disagreement and moving on, and we have till five o'clock to get there.
Okay.
Okay.
Do we have a limit as far as how late we're staying here tonight?
I brought an overnight bag.
In other words, you don't want to be off the last ferry.
So I suggest we move along.
So what exactly are we voting on, then? I mean, if we're voting on each line?
Well, we're, we're seeing what, what we agree on, or we can, we can go back to going through the packet and addressing the issues that we all might have, and then wait until after the public hearing. Gary?
If I can comment, yeah, if we can get through the pages and just, you know, if we have agreement or we don't have agreement on the pages, and any changes we want to propose, propose them and then move ahead. But it's not to make a recommendation. It's only to take and, you know, go through the pages, and if we do have a change or something that we see, and then get to that point. And then if we wait for public input tonight, and then if we have any further changes after that point, then we can make a recommendation on those, or propose and then make a recommendation on those. But if we can get through it, I think it's a good way. We can just go page by page. If we've got nothing, we'll vote yea or nay, and move along and keep going.
Anyone else?
And what we can do, too, as staff, is Samia has the Word version of this up on the board. As the commission makes recommendations on changes, the, these little straw votes, or whatever you want to call them, we'll keep track of them on the board here, and then that will give you a package to look back on at the end of the night and say, okay, this is our recommendation. This is the, this is the set of things that we approve as a recommendation. And like you say, maybe some of those things change after the, after the public hearing, or some things add to it.
The motion for page 129 failed, so we'll move on.
Wait a minute. We're not done yet, are we? One, oh, sorry. Yes, we are.
Page two. Anyone have any changes, corrections, additions?
Yes. Policy 2A-11, strike and/or lammard. And, well, you can't ensure it shall, because it should, and this hasn't been changed, but strike the, without expanding UGA and/or lammard boundaries. And I'm suggesting that, but I would like a little input from people who live in or near, or do business in these lammards, about this whole common ownership question. That could be a valid, a valid reason for, for allowing this section. But I would, I would like a little, yeah. Policy 2A-11.
Do you have a specific question to a specific person?
Well, my motion is to strike lammard after UGA and/or lammard boundaries. Strike lammard. That's my motion. And if there's a second, I'd like to discuss why the previous language, which is new language, new red-line language, what was included about the common ownership question.
Is there a second? Do you have a specific question to?
Yes.
A specific person?
Well, Gary, I'll start, I'll start with you. The term common ownership should include lands owned by the same person or entities, and also by affiliated companies with common ownership. What was the, what was the reasoning behind that inclusion? Was it based on extensive public testimony before this county council?
I don't recall that it was something that was requested by any member of the public, at least not in spoken testimony. Council members might have more of a recollection of what, what the rationale is behind that. Originally, this policy 2A11 was talking about UGA boundaries. And this, this addition expands this discussion to include lammard boundaries as well.
Wasn't this the deal where we decided, there was a proposal to draw a line, and it would basically cut up a piece of land that was in, that was owned by someone and basically make, you know, two separate sets of zoning? Was that the reason for doing this?
I think the, the, did we what?
Did we ever do that? Was there ever a situation where we basically divided that ownership by the, as a result of the line that we put through that land?
Well, there are a number of areas in the county that are what we call split zones, where part of the property is in one zone, part of the property is in another. And I think this may be an attempt to avoid that kind of situation with a lammard.
Is there?
But this, but that's, that's talking about a particular property. What this is talking about is two adjacent properties that may be in either the same name ownership or under the same holding company or trust, or something like that.
Is there any limit to the size of that property, or it could, you know, be a large, I guess the lammard would limit the size.
What you see is what you get.
Commissioner, Ohio.
Can you explain this and how it relates to UGAs? Because UGAs are kind of like off-limits a little bit, and to have a lammard next to a UGA is not recommended to some degree. And so if somebody owns property and that property runs into a UGA, isn't that what this is addressing? So help me understand how this applies to all of our thoughts that we've had in the past. Barbara's going to do this.
Again, this is something that came about from the, from the county council themselves, so I'm not sure I'm the one to try and give the rationale for that.
You have help right next to you.
Councilwoman Bremer.
Yes, this was proposed by councilmember Crawford, and there was supposed to be language, it was supposed to be right in here, and I don't see it, saying unless it creates a highly irregular boundary. But that was councilmember Crawford's language, and I wasn't comfortable with it unless it had the other part of unless it creates a highly irregular. Oh, okay, sorry, it is there. Is it, is it up there?
The word unless is not in there.
Oh, except, okay, except or on whatever. Yeah, so that's where it came from, and I wasn't comfortable until it had that other part in there.
I still need clarification. I'm still confused, Barbara. It's got to be simpler, two-year-old stuff.
Well, I can't speak for councilmember Crawford, but what it says basically is, you want to split people's property as little as possible. That's as simple as I can make it. But if it creates a really highly irregular boundary, you're going to have to.
Okay, but I think that, you know, that's a valid question, is the UGA and lammard, should they both be in there together? Why, we, the motion is to eliminate the reference to lammard. What, okay, what if we eliminate the reference to UGA?
UGA was always there.
UGA was always.
Yeah, it's the lammard part that got, got added.
Anyone else?
I'll withdraw the motion.
Okay. Anything else on 229, 2 of 29? Moving on to 3 of 29. Does anyone have any changes, additions, deletions?
Michelle, do we need to vote on that page?
He withdrew the motion.
So we accept that, but we didn't vote to accept that page?
Okay. Do we want to vote on accepting page 2 of 29? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Page 3 of 29. Any changes, deletions, additions? Speak now. Okay, 4.
Yeah, I got a question here at the very end. Why did we delete Growth Management Act? In the last number two, regional and local government coordination, the county should consult and coordinate with cities where city-associated UGAs are included in the sub-area plan boundaries. What was the reference to the Growth Management Act that was deleted? I'm sorry. What was the, what was the reference to the Growth Management Act, and why did we delete Growth Management Act?
Just to put that in perspective, this is not part of the deleted or added version. That language is exactly the same. That hasn't changed.
Then why did we have deleted the Growth Management Act? The bottom of page 3 of 29. We've also deleted have been reviewed for compliance.
Are you directing the?
Don't tell me I've got the only copy that says.
Mine is paginated differently. I had a large type mine because of my age.
Is this question to Mr. Davis?
Mr. Davis, yeah.
Right, I'm, I don't have it committed to memory yet, so I have to go back and reacquaint myself with this.
I'm not sure, but it may be that it's, these are all subsections of the paragraph, and the paragraph already refers to it. The Growth Management Act in, you know, policy 2L-2, right in the body of the paragraph? So maybe they felt it was repetitive, I don't know.
Was it possible?
I think if I were trying to promote this.
Oh, I know, I know what this was. Look, look toward the middle of the page here. There's a comment in shaded area. This whole section, everything that's underlined here, these were changes that were not made as part of this process. These were changes that were made as part of the 2009 urban growth area review, which happened after the planning commission recommendation. So that's why it's different, that's why it shows up as being different. This wasn't something that was done by the county council as part of the, as the rural element. This was part of that ordinance for the urban growth area. That's why this shows up, and that's why I put that comment there.
So the red-line copy that you sent me did not have that underlined or read, so we wouldn't be considering that today. Is that correct?
That I sent you?
I don't think the deletes were redlined.
Were redlined?
They didn't strike, they didn't do strikeout.
The deletes, yeah, the deletes are bubbles, the way I did it. So when you reprinted it, they may have come out differently or may have gotten removed. That could be a problem. Sometimes, sometimes the track changes thing gets a little temperamental.
So are we going to, Commissioner?
I'd just like to mention, I think that it makes sense to craft the sentence so that you're required to coordinate with cities rather than being required to coordinate with the Growth Management Act. That's a sort of an unworkable requirement.
But again, this whole section is something that wasn't, something that was changed by the planning, or by the county council from the 2009 version.
So are we ready to vote on page 3 of 29? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, 4 of 29. Any changes, deletions?
Same thing.
I have a comment here in the middle of.
Use your microphone, please.
In the middle of page four there, it looks like there might need to be a wordsmithing item, very minor, on item number two, post-GMA sub-area plan addressing rural areas. These sub-area plans should, something to, it needs to be the word be in there, but just very minor.
Okay.
So Gary, this whole page, I have it underlined, but Mr. Bell doesn't have it in red, so it's really off of our discussion, right?
Well, technically, the county council did change this, but it wasn't a part of the rural element review. It was part of the urban growth area. It just happened to happen after the planning commission recommendation.
So it's not part of our discussion, or it is?
I don't know. What do you think? I mean, technically, it's something that was changed by the county council. I would hate to say no and then have it.
Because that answer might save us a lot of time, or cost us a lot of time.
Well, this, this and one other brief section later on is affected by that.
So we're almost done with it.
And we're almost done with that issue. And if it's just that one Scrivener's error, maybe that's something we can take care of. I don't know.
So any other comments on 4 of 29? Are we ready to vote? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Page 5 of 29. Any changes?
Yeah, policy, policy 2L4. Question, why did we delete limited areas of more intensive rural development from that policy? Support the rural economic base by permitting national resource-based industries, et cetera, and agriculture in rural areas, as well as commercial investor activity within designated rural communities? Can you expand on that, Gary, as to why that reference was deleted?
Well, again, I'm bringing myself up to speed on this.
Apparently, you deleted expand the rural economic base and inserted support.
Mm-hmm.
Isn't this just the change that they went to rural communities instead of rural centers sort of idea, instead of saying the type of lammard that it is?
Well.
It's more specific. It zeroes in on type 1 lammards rather than, okay.
I think this bears the faint aroma of work session language.
It's a type, it's a type 1? It looks like a type 3.
It looks like a type 3. Rural Economic Cottage Industries, that's a type 3.
That could be. Councilmember Crawford just reminded me that that was something that was made at the suggestion of Futurewise. I'm not sure what the specific rationale of that was.
Well, whoever made it, what I suggested, after in rural areas and limited areas of more intensive rural development in appropriate regions of the county, period, and delete the rest.
Will you make the motion? Will you state the motion?
My motion is to change Policy 2L4 to read, "Support the rural economic base by permitting natural resource-based industries, cottage industries, forestry, fishing, and agriculture in rural areas, and limited areas of more intensive rural development in appropriate regions of the county," period.
Second?
No. If you take off appropriate regions of the county, I'll second.
I'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
Okay. Oh, they can't hear us, we need to use these.
I said I'll second it if he takes off appropriate regions of the county. Those should be all defined under law here, and it shouldn't be arbitrary.
As a point of order, can we read the amendment as it's on the table?
Yeah. I'm sorry.
I didn't hear what you said.
Can we read the amendment as revised?
Reread the motion?
Yeah.
Will you reread?
Because I wanted to.
Policy 2L4, "Support the rural economic base by permitting natural resource-based industries, cottage industries, forestry, fishing, and agriculture in rural areas, and limited areas of more intensive rural development," period.
Oh, okay.
Commissioner Hahnku.
From a comment standpoint, by doing that, it appears that we're leaving out, we're not supporting industrial activity and commercial activity by doing that. I understand that you're talking about the Lambert, but the position where that should be placed would be at the end of it, not in the middle of it, because we're striking out commercial and industrial activity.
I, you know, I want to get through this quickly, because I got a problem with industrial activity in designated rural communities, that these new rural communities, particularly since we've decided to increase the number of Lambert's by about 50% overall. So Commissioner Belial suggested that we just shorten it more to say, "Support the rural economic base by permitting natural resource-based industries, cottage industries, forestry, fishing, and agriculture in rural areas," period. And I'm okay with that, I'll accept that.
There's a motion on the table.
I withdraw my motion and reinsert this motion.
Okay.
Yeah, where are we at?
We have to restate the new motion.
State the new motion.
New motion on Policy 2L4, "Support the rural economic base by permitting natural resource-based industries, cottage industries, forestry, fishing, and agriculture in rural areas."
Okay, and that's been seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, Commissioner Bell.
And your specific reason for not wanting industrial is?
I want to keep it out of rural communities.
Is the fear of industrialization of the area?
Commissioner Hahnku?
I think the creation of the rim zone is specific to the reason that industrial activity is included, is rural industrial manufacturing. So I think it's an, it's an important element that's in the paragraph.
But this is talking about rural communities. This is talking about, Gary, is this talking about type 1 Lambert's or type 3 Lambert's?
Rural community refers to type 1 Lambert's.
Okay.
And so that limits it to those areas that we were talking about, that are larger areas that include the small towns and include areas like Laurel and areas with both industrial and commercial uses existing, and allowed for in the proposed zoning.
Okay, does the motion need to be restated? Yes, please.
Policy 2L4, "Support the rural economic base by permitting natural resource-based industries, cottage industries, forestry, fishing, and agriculture in rural areas," period.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion fails. Okay, as far as page 5 of 29, any other comments?
Hang on. Again, the purpose of rural lands section is to provide direction for land use decisions in the rural areas of the county.
We can't hear you.
I'm sorry. Rural lands introduction, the purpose of rural lands section is to provide direction for land use decisions in the rural areas of the county. We've again, we've again deleted, consistent with Growth Management Act allowance of development in rural areas, including Lambert's. Is there any reason? I mean, it just seems to me that if we're, you know, going to be looking at challenges to this, which may be, in fact, inevitable, given the nature of this process, that we're eliminating any references to Lambert's and the Growth Management Act. Why do we do, why are we doing that?
Is this a question to Mr. Davis?
It is a question to Mr. Davis.
Well, keep in mind when you ask me these questions, this has been done over the period of two years, so I can't instantly go and spot exactly what everybody was thinking at the time when this was done, so these questions.
I was here.
It's, I'm just saying, it's a little hard for me to just pull an answer off the top of my head here.
It's more of a question of why don't we include that in the text to make it more compatible with what we're doing, which is talking about Lambert's and the Growth Management Act.
I think it's covered elsewhere in that, in that section. I think it's pretty obvious where we refer to Growth Management Act and talk about the rural character definitions out of GMA. I'm not sure that it's necessary to, just for that opening purpose statement to get into a lot of detail.
So this is done for brevity? I don't believe that.
Is there a motion?
Yes. My motion is the purpose of the rural lands section is to provide direction for land use decisions in rural areas of Waukam County, consistent with the Growth Management Act's allowance of development in the rural area, including limited areas of more intensive rural development.
Is there a second? Okay, any other changes, additions, deletions on 5 of 29?
I do. The, anybody else down there? No.
Commissioner Belial.
GMA requires counties to provide a variety. That whole underlined section there seems to shift the responsibility away from the GMA and to the county. And this whole paragraph is about GMA requirements, and to say as established by the county is not GMA requirements. And so it may be okay for the county to establish some of these things, but that sentence needs to be somewhere where it deals with what the county does and not what the GMA does. And so I would like to see that whole first underlined section struck, because we're talking GMA, and for it to say the GMA RCW defines the rural character as patterns and patterns of land use and development established by a county in the rural element of its comprehensive plan, that's pretty distinct.
Yeah.
And then it goes through ABC, and that's pretty distinct. And to have that sentence in above it pretty much confuses the whole issue and causes conflict here.
Is there a motion?
Make that motion.
Second.
I don't understand the motion.
The motion.
Be specific.
The specific is, all right, the GMA RCW 36, that sentence is the only thing left standing in that paragraph.
The rest of it's redundant.
No, it's not only redundant, it's also not in the correct place when it comes to the GMA requirements to talk about as established by the county.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Hahnku?
I think I have a question on it more than anything else. It appears potentially that the sentence was added to add more definition to what the GMA definition is. Is, Gary, can you give us any background on that at all?
Well, yeah, that is another GMA requirement. GMA requires counties provide for a variety of rural densities and uses. I mean, when we're listing GMA requirements, that's one of the things they require.
So was the intent, if you know, was that added by council recently? Was the intent there to add, to specifically put out, put in the wordage, variety of rural densities versus just rural character, which is what is below right after GMA? Do you happen to know what the intent was, or why?
I, this may have been one of the, checking my old drafts here, it looks like it was something that was included by staff when we proposed our September 7th draft. You recall from the memo, council was, council gave staff direction to come back with a new draft, and this was a new draft. And this is, this was a description we thought was important to talk about the rural character, but also talk about what they require in terms of providing a variety of rural uses.
Here's the problem with this, and this is a very contentious couple of words here. Would everybody be okay if we just kept the first part in, or would the person who made the motion, and stop after area and delete as established by the county? Because if you say as established by the county, you're going to get these RR2 or R1s, oh, that's rural. And that's the, that's the, that's the heart of the contentious nature of all these things that are going on with the county council. Because a lot of people think that this counted RR1 is rural, or R2 is rural. So I want to get, I want to get rid of that as established by the county. That's, those are volatile words.
Comment?
Commissioner Hahnku.
The GMA definition specifically says established by a county. Now, it doesn't say as, but it does say established by a county. So, you know, we deleted one area, but I don't think we get rid of it. We're not changing what the RCW requirement is. The RCW is requiring the counties to do the planning, and that's the point of it, I believe.
We've added verbiage that is not required, at least I don't think so. And that's the motion that we're talking about right now.
So, Gary Davis?
Commissioner Hahnku.
On that, you mentioned that staff proposed that, is that, is there any specific, I know this is probably asking a lot for you to think back when it was put in, but there, I would imagine there was some purpose for that at that time.
Well, like I said, there was that requirement in GMA and both that, that language about rural character.
In your opinion?
And I'm just trying to find exactly how and where that came about.
By having it there, do you see any harm to it at this point?
He's going to have a difficult time answering that one and keeping his job.
In a turn of pain.
I should have sworn, I said what.
Okay, let's call the vote.
I didn't want this issue to get so contentious, but I just saw a flag up there when it says established by the county. The county has to establish this under the GMA, but in this section, I really don't think it belongs there, as I said. And I also think it's confusing and could be interpreted in a way it's not meant to be in the future. So I really would like to see that gone, and I also don't think, you know, the way, as strongly as everything else is written, with it gone, it should make no effect at all, where if it stays, it might make an effect.
Okay, will you restate the motion?
Well, the motion might, should have changed. Everything can stay the same in there, except that as established by the county is removed, which was not my original motion, but it'll accomplish the same thing.
Okay.
Can I? We have to act on the existing motion, and you have to make a new motion. Not to be a stickler for Roberts, but.
Well, then I'll withdraw, I'll withdraw the motion and make this new motion, yeah.
And Commissioner Les, I'll second. Okay.
Just wanted to clarify, to ask where this came from. I mean, let me read out of GMA 36700705C, "The rural element shall include measures that apply to rural development and protect the rural character of the area as established by the county." That's where it came from.
But that's an RCW in a different section, right? In that section?
That's the rural element.
Same section.
Oh, it's C.
5C.
My C doesn't say that.
Okay, the motion's on the table? It's been seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. Okay, any other changes, additions, deletions on 5 of 29?
We'll accept the page.
So we're, we're going to pass 5 of 29. All in favor?
Aye.
6 of 29. Any changes, deletions, additions?
I'd like.
Commissioner Bell?
I didn't have any.
Oh, I see arms, I'm not sure who they're attached to. Belial.
Yeah, just a little on a second. I'm glad that I'm attached to my arms.
Me too. You're on the wrong page.
I'm on the wrong page?
Yeah.
I'm on 7 of 29.
We're on 6 of 29.
I'm on 6.
Well, I'm not usually ahead of the game.
Okay, we're on 6 of 29. Any changes, additions, or deletions? Okay, all in favor of approving?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we're on 7 of 29.
No, you go.
My turn, I guess. So 2DD-6, the underlined section. I think I'm reading that again now. I think we'll let it be.
So you're okay with 2DD-6?
I think so, I read it one. Maybe a little bit.
Well, can I move down to 2DD-8? A lot more intensive uses and limited areas of more intense rural development designated consistent with the RCW, it's Growth Management Act. Gary, I'm going to ask you again, the employment opportunity, this sounds like, kind of like Lambert's on steroids, this policy, 2DD-8. You're allowing more intensive uses in limited areas of more intensive rural development, consistent with the Growth Management Act, of course, which provide public and commercial services and employment opportunities, while preventing them from spreading in patterns of sprawl development, having adverse impact on surrounding areas and nearby resource lands, and protecting rural character. That statement contradicts itself, as far as I'm concerned.
Is there a motion?
My motion would be to, first of all, strike everything after opportunities. That's all.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Commissioner Hahnku? Use your mic. I'm curious how you come up with that, that's contradictory. I would think that while preventing them from spreading in patterns of sprawl development would be part of the goal of the paragraph.
It is, but you're, you used intensive, intensive twice. I mean, you know, basically, you're going to intensify the uses in a Lambert, which by its own definition was supposed to be a limited, limited area of more intense development. And then you, you know, you throw this in here, saying that, well, but consistent with quality of life and all that stuff, that's like, you know, saying, I'll let it in for the raised gestate. You know, I just don't, I would, you know, I'm not even going to vote for this thing. So. So that's all I have to say about that, and I think it's necessary.
Are you withdrawing your motion?
I don't have a motion.
Okay. Okay, any other additions, deletions, changes on seven of 29?
Gary, how's that?
Commissioner Honka.
Under the deleted policy two DD dash eight, assure economic prosperity for rural areas and allow rural property owners reasonable use of their land by continuing to allow legal nonconforming uses. Gary Davis, I'd like you to comment on how that was removed, when it was taken out, who took it out, and why was it taken out?
Sure. And I was able to do a little research on this one in advance. This is a policy that is not in the current comprehensive plan, so it's not something that's being taken out of what exists now. This is a policy that was drafted by staff with the first round, with the first draft of plan text and maps back in June of 2009, and it, and it was, and it lasted through the Planning Commission recommendation. And I believe, I would just have to guess at the rationale for it, but I believe at that time, the lammard boundaries were very, very small. There were, we were creating a number of proposals for small type three lammards, especially along the guide, and some areas where there's a mixture of, of commercial development before they were brought into larger type one lammards that would allow for infill. So I think there was a need there at that time to really emphasize that it's important to retain properties through nonconforming, through the nonconforming provisions of the zoning code, because a number of the businesses along those areas would find themselves in the nonconforming situation. With the September 2010 draft, when most of those areas were now included in type one lammards, that became less of an issue. So this, this policy here would, is just saying, is kind of redundant, it's saying something that we already do, which is to ensure nonconforming uses continue.
And that's the law, isn't it?
Sure, yeah.
So this policy then was, to clarify here, was part of the Planning Commission recommendation on 10-8, 2009?
Correct.
Okay, so if it was not removed by the council, then it is part of this current document?
It is a change that was made by, essentially by the council, but it's, it's something that was made by staff when we presented that September 7th, 2009 draft with the new And this is part of the document that's now, or this deletion is, is part of the document that is, was introduced on April 12th.
Is there a motion?
I'm not, I'm not doing it yet. So that's not real clear, because at that April 12th meeting, I don't recall there being a motion to remove that.
No, no. It was removed during the, at the September 7th draft. When the September 7th draft was presented to the county council, then that was language that was deleted by staff at that point. I don't believe there was discussion by the council of deleting or not deleting that portion.
Okay. Well, I think that's an important policy to have in there, to reassure and reaffirm the continuing allowed legal nonconforming uses. I mean, there are areas that do not have lammards, and they have nonconforming businesses that will be, remain in that area. As an example of one, I would say at the corner of Guide, Meridian, and Badger, there is a slew of existing businesses that will become nonconforming or are becoming more nonconforming as time goes on. And so I'm going to make the motion that policy two DD dash eight stated, assure economic prosperity for rural areas and allow rural property owners reasonable use of their land by continuing to allow legal nonconforming uses be put back in, and it'd be titled two DT dash nine. So two DD dash nine, that's currently there, would become 10.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion?
On the, on the corner of the badge and the guy, Badger and the guy, most of those businesses are nonconforming now.
Right.
That's right.
And so this would make them nonconforming, but okay. Which is not the, I mean, if they're nonconforming now, why wouldn't they be nonconforming after?
Well, they're legal, they're legal nonconforming, and it reiterates, it's the only place in the comp plan that talks about legal nonconforming businesses. And that was just one example, but there's, there's many others.
I don't understand legal nonconforming business. I mean, if you're there and you're nonconforming, you should be legal.
You're not necessarily, no.
Yes, you are.
No, you're not. Because if you were permitted, if you were, and Gary can clarify this, but if you were permitted use at some point, depending on your age, and the zoning, the underlying zoning changed, you were a legal business when you, when you went there, but you became nonconforming.
But some of those businesses on that corner never wore, were permitted correctly or made the status, they're made the status of nonconforming now, as long as they changed some practices, but they went in there and just did it, and it was interesting.
Well, that's, and that applies in other, that applies in other areas as well.
Right.
And that is, I just used that corner as an example.
Well, it was a poor one, but, because, because of the problems with the businesses there that exist under the laws as it exists today, to let them escape that with this clause would not be too cool.
If I can interject you, adding this clause as a policy in the, in this general policy document doesn't change the status of any of the legal nonconforming or the existing, any existing uses out there that may be illegal, you know, one way or the other. This, this doesn't change that. This just, as you say, reiterates the county's support of nonconforming uses, which, you know, I think originally staff thought was kind of redundant, since we're required to do that anyway. So it's a question of whether you want that policy just stated as a general goal in the, in our policy document here.
Commissioner Rainey?
I would just try and clarify what Gary was saying, and I know the piece of property you were talking about, and that was allowed because it was an ag support business. Are you suggesting that we should allow businesses that wouldn't support ag in there in your motion? Would that, would that allow car dismantling or something like that? We see that around the county, but.
No, it's, it's not to add any businesses. It's basically to codify support for nonconforming businesses that currently are there. So that's just one example, but there's, there's many examples of that, and I think that's really important when it comes to how they are being viewed more and more, not just by the county, but also the impact that can have on that existing business that's there from a finance standpoint, is that it underlines the support from the county that those conform, nonconforming businesses can continue to operate. And that's important as part, as part of the nonconforming business. So it's not, not there to increase or add any additional nonconforming businesses, it's just to support the ones that are there. When this is adopted and complete, when the lammards are actually drawn, and especially where the, the GC zoning is going to be removed, the general commercial zoning that's going to be removed, you're going to have businesses that are going to be left out in the cold, and they will become nonconforming when that happens. Now, granted, with all the changes, there's a lot less of those than there was, but they're still going to be there. I mean, another one that comes to mind is like Sunrise Grocery, for instance. I mean, it's been there forever. It was a waypoint, a horse waypoint stop, and it just, it puts, codifies support for those nonconforming uses.
Commissioner Lesal.
I'm not going to support this, Gary, but I see, I see what you, what you want to do here. Would you, would you support after legal, allow, continue to allow legal nonconforming uses as of, and then put a date in there, because it sounds like it, you know, could be, could be open-ended. So when I retire and want to, you know, start my car dismantling business in Point Robert, so I could point to this and say, you know, it's a nonconforming use. But if, you know, for, for businesses that have been established for a long period of time, and maybe Ms. Frakes could, could expand on this, they, they can continue as long as they want under the current law, can they not? So, you know.
No, no, they can't.
Well, you say no, and, you know.
If, if it-
Nonconforming uses. Have you heard of your question on-
You're talking about the-
Yes.
Yeah, they can continue. There's, our, our code is very generous when it comes to nonconforming uses.
But they can't start-
No.
No.
Commissioner Belial?
So in the case of the Sunrise Grocery, if they are legally, or in the case of Laurel Feed and Supply, these people, I don't know if the Sunrise is, but I know Laurel is, they're legally nonconforming business right now, Laurel is, and if we change all this, it shouldn't make any difference to them at all, right?
No, this doesn't affect the laws that pertains to nonconforming uses.
Right. I mean, you know, sort of have this in is quite redundant, actually, and maybe based on some unfounded fears.
The motion is to add, now, is this to add or replace?
I'll restate it.
Okay.
Restate the motion, which is putting in the same wordage that was there by the, was passed by the earlier Planning Commission. Assure economic prosperity for rural areas and allow rural property owners reasonable use of their land by continuing to allow legal nonconforming uses. And the policy number would be policy two DD dash nine, and policy two DD dash nine would be remunerated to 10.
Is there a second?
There was two.
I had seconded.
Oh, okay. Okay. Discussion? Belial?
Gary, I understand what you're saying here, and I think it's an unfounded fear. So can you show me someplace where this may actually happen to somebody that's legally nonconforming now and did everything they could do to fit the requirements for that to happen and have it be removed from them by any actions with this lammard, lammard situation?
Well, it's going to make more of them nonconforming when the lammards are put into place, but it's the only place in the comp plan that, where it, that's the only place in the comp plan that referred to nonconforming uses, and I thought it was important that it be stated back in the comp plan. That was my reason for putting it back on the table.
So you really can't found your fears with this, with any factual?
I think it's important to support the nonconforming businesses that are out there and that are continuing, that will increase and continue to be out there.
And I agree with that 100%, but to give them false hope or concept with this statement is not doing anybody any service, because they get the same rights either way.
Well, then it's important to codify it and put that into writing.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes.